If we could be seated, everybody, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. So we'll start the meeting at 7:05. Reading of the Sunshine Law. Thanks for joining us for tonight's reorganization meeting. Sunshine Law reads as follows. Adequate notice of the organization meeting set forth time, date, and location has been provided in accordance with the requirement of the Open Publics Meeting Act on January 10, 2022, by prominently posting a copy of the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, Dwayne Today, and the municipal clerk. You can please rise for the flag salute and a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. At this stage of the meeting, I'd like to read the certified election results. I am in receipt of certification from the county of Passaic Office of County Clerk, Ms. Danielle Ironman Amoff. The top three vote-getters. First was Mrs. Barbara Rigoloso with 8,579 votes. Second was Ryan Battershill at 7,725, and Mr. Matthew Giordano at 5,799. So that'll be recorded for the record and posted in the minutes. At this stage, what we'll do is the swearing-in. So what we'll do is alphabetical order. I'll be swearing Mr. Battershill. If you could bring your family or anybody else that you'd like to be with you at this moment, and I'll read both with you. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Ryan Battershill.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
And to the governments established in the United States
And this state
And this state
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state my
I, Ryan Battershill.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
For the office of member of a Board of Education
For the office of member of Board of Education
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense
Listed in NJSA-18A:12-1
Listed in NJSA-18A:12-1
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
All the duties of that office
All the duties of that office
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
So help me God.
So help me God.
You take a seat, man. Mr. Giordano, if you could. Mr. Pavlik.
I state your name.
I, Matthew Giordano.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
And to the governments established in the United States
And the state under the authority of the people. So help me God.
And the state under the authority of the people. So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Matthew Giordano.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed
That I possess the qualifications prescribed
By law for the office of member of the Board of Education
By the law for the office of the member of the Board of Education
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1
And I'm not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed
And New Jersey statute annotated NJSA-18A:12-1
And NJSA-18A:12-1
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
All duties of that office according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
All the duties of the office according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rigoloso, if you'd like to join us, please. Say yes.
I can hold the Bible.
Sure can. It's right there.
So if I could just take one minute, I've got to tell you, I'm so honored to be here with Barbara and Charlie and the entire family, or at least partial. This is partial of the Rigoloso family. I don't know if you guys know that. It's a very, very big family, which explains the successful vote, by the way. But we have been friends for between 25 and 30 years. Charlie and I met many, many years ago initially, and this friendship has gone on for so long. And in fact, I was saying, I remember when Juliana was born. And that's 20 years ago.
We're so honored to have you here today.
Well, it's a real, it's a real pleasure. And let's get on with the duties. Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Place your left hand on the Bible, if you can do that. Okay. So I
I, Barbara Rigoloso
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And to the governments established
And to the governments established
In the United States
In the United States
And in this state
And in this state
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people
So help me God
So help me God.
I
I, Barbara Rigoloso
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I possess the qualifications
That I possess the qualifications
Prescribed by law
Prescribed by law
For the office of member of the Board of Education
For the office of member of Board of Education
And not disqualified as a voter
And not disqualified as a voter
Pursuant to RS-19:4-1
Pursuant to RS-19:14-1
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime
Or offense listed in NJSA-18A:12-1
Or offense listed in NJSA-18A:12-1
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially
And justly perform
And justly perform
All the duties of
All the duties of
That office
That office
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
So help me God
So help me God.
What I'll do now is call roll for the newly formed Board of Education. Mr. Battershill. Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Fatale.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mrs. Kazan.
Here.
Mr. Pavlik.
Here.
Mr. Prusakos.
Present.
Mrs. Rigoloso.
Present.
And Mrs. Wintick.
Here.
At this stage, I will open the floor for nominations for President of the Board of Education. Mr. Fatale.
Mr. Moffett, I'd like to respectfully nominate if you don't have that.
Second? Second, what was it? Excuse me, I missed that.
Sorry.
Okay, I had it, I had it. Mr. Fatale nominates Mr. Pavlik. And I understand that's the second we're looking for?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the floor for nominations. Just a little housekeeping. You have ballots within your folders in front of you. There's one for both President and Vice President. So right now, we'll be marking them in your, your vote. It will be selected on that piece of paper, and then you can write your name on the bottom. And then Mrs. Lydig will be there to pick them up, and I'll read them for the, for the record. Just Mr. Fatale.
In regards to nominations, do we not need a second?
You are by, by law not required to have a second.
Understood. Thank you.
First vote cast for Mr. Pavlik. Second vote is for Mr. Pavlik. And just to, just point to this, on this form, we'll have another round of voting for Vice President. But this ballot is for Mr. Pavlik as President. Next ballot is for Mr. Pavlik. Next ballot for Mr. Pavlik. Next ballot is for Mr. Pavlik. Next ballot is a no vote for Mr. Pavlik. Next ballot is for Mr. Pavlik. Next ballot is for Mr. Pavlik. Next vote is for Mr. Pavlik. Do I have all ballots? Mr. Pavlik is the Board President. Congratulations. Thank you, everyone, and I thank my colleagues. I'll make my comments later. This time, we'll take nominations for Vice President. Mrs. Wintick.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Harry Prusakos for Vice President.
Second.
Okay. Any other?
I'd like to respectfully nominate Stephanie Sean Duffy.
Any other nominations? Seeing none? Please vote for one. So the first vote for Mr. Prusakos as voice, as Vice President. First ballot reads, Mr. Prusakos. Second ballot, Mr. Prusakos. Paper ballot suggests an abstention. It's an abstention. Next ballot indicates Mr. Prusakos. Next ballot reads, Mr. Duffy. But unfortunately, this is a vote just for Vice President. Yes or no for Mr. Prusakos? Next ballot indicates Mr. Prusakos. Next ballot indicates Mr. Prusakos. I'll put this aside. This does not indicate Mr., yes or no for Mr. Prusakos. But get there. Next one. Okay, so we have five in the affirmative for Mr. Prusakos, one abstention. And the three in question are marked for Mr. Duffy, which would put him at three, since we're doing it together, if that's what the Board's pleasure is. Mr. Prusakos is Vice President with five. No. That gavel's staying there. Okay, Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda?
There are no revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. We're open to the public on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Do I have a mover? Mr. Giordano?
Second.
Mr. Prusakos. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on agenda items only?
Seeing no one, I move, make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Second. Move to administrative items. What we're doing here, we're moving administrative items, which are naming our depository, our official newspaper, and number of other housekeeping things that we have to do at the beginning of each new board session. Anyone? Do I have a mover? Mr. Giordano?
I'd like to make a, a motion to move this as a whole, move the agenda to a whole.
Okay. You agree? Okay. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to have a discussion about our calendar and possibly move some of the sessions, the public work sessions, maybe three per year to the high schools pending availability and schedule.
We can work on that. That'll, some coordination. Anything else, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Mr. Battershill?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Quick question, this mean just to vote on the three or just to vote to move them?
This is a vote on the whole agenda at this point?
Okay, then yes.
So that is a yes. Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlik?
Yes.
Mr. Prusakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso? And Mrs. Wintick?
I say yes on everything except L-4 and L-8. I abstain from those. Thank you.
Motion carries. This time, we'll open to the public. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The Board bears no responsibilities for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Do I have a mover? Mr. Giordano?
Second.
Mrs. Wintick? Anyone from the public?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Mark Faber from Wayne. I just want to congratulate our newly seated members. I think that we still have a lot of work to do together, and I'm hoping that this year, we can have some really positive traction on trying to get the schools back to where they were before the pandemic and really helping our kids become the best that they can be. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Prusakos. At this time, I'd like to, if you go into your packets, there's a few items in your packets for the board member. One, we have a presentation that Mr. Geppert will be giving to us at a future time. But we also have the Code of Ethics for board members. Ask everyone to please read that. We'll be going over that in depth at a future meeting within the next few weeks. If anyone has any questions concerning it, they can contact me, and I will direct you to the attorney if necessary, if it requires. But we will be having a full-out meeting on the ethics with the entire Board at a future date. It's training that we all need to refresh our minds. There's also acknowledgement of the Code of Ethics. Ask everyone to please sign that, and we'll get that back to, just send it to the center here. Also, in your packets are committee choice forms. Ask you to fill that out and get that to either me or Mr. Moffett by the end of the meeting. One other thing I'm going to ask the Board, if they would. If you have any vacations planned for the summer, please let Mr. Moffett know if you have anything at this point scheduled. We want to try to do our best to come up with meeting dates where we can be sure we have a quorum. Any, Mr. Moffett, anything?
No, you've covered everything. And if there's any questions in regard to the forms, feel free to see me after the meeting. But yes, I take the, the oaths and any of the other information tonight. Thanks.
Any Old Business? We're going to go over that in depth at
I'm sorry, excuse me, New Business? Did I miss that?
No, we didn't get there. Right old. New business.
Congratulations to all of your, our new board members. Hope to look, work closely with all of you. Congratulations to our new President, Vice President. And let's hope this 2023 is better than 2022, 2021, 2020. That's it. Thank you all for coming.
That's it. Thank you all for coming. Any other new, Mrs. Kazan?
Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to working with my new colleagues, my old colleagues, and I'm looking forward to a successful year on the board.
Mr. Prasakos?
I also want to say Happy New Year to everyone in the district. Congratulations to the new board members. I know it's a brand-new year, but it's also half of the school year, so we still have six goals this year that we need to take care of. So I'm looking forward to getting everything moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Wintek?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I hope everyone had a great holiday season. First, I would like to thank our outgoing board members, Mrs. Padap and Mr. Baba, for their time and service to our community. We haven't had a chance to do that before. Next, I welcome Mr. Batterhill, Mrs. Rigoloso, and Mr. Giordano to the Board of Education, and congratulations again. And finally, congratulations to our new Board President and Vice President. I look forward working with you both this year. I wanted to share something with you today. One thing that stood out to me at the New Jersey School Board Convention we attended in the fall in Atlantic City, and it was board culture. It was mentioned a lot in the training sessions, on the shuttle going to the conventions. It was mentioned many times. So I thought about our board culture and what does it, what should it look like? So according to the dictionary, a culture is customary beliefs, social forms, the characteristics, features of everyday existence, and/or set of the shared attitudes, values, goals, practices, and that characterizes an institution or an organization. I want the Wayne Township Board of Education culture to be inclusive, transparent, and collaborative, including parental involvement and listening to their ideas and concerns, where we work together as a team. I want the board to have more opportunities to have conversations with parents and taxpayers in a different format than just the board meetings, maybe possibly open forum on quarterly basis if we can. I applaud to the parents who want to be part of their children's education. I know it's not easy coming here and speaking. It's not easy for me either. I'll close with this. In an article from the School Board Journal I read, "In America, the most critical responsibility of a school board is to safeguard the public's trust in education. Achieving public's trust requires excellent board policymaking, rigorous monitoring of operations in all areas, especially treatment of students, asset protection, and evaluation of staff. Public trust hinges on clear organizational mission to educate all students and challenge them to their best level of ability. So we, as the board, need to hear from the parents, and you need to hold us accountable, because that's the only way we will find out what job we're doing. We want to hear from you and work with you all. I hope that the culture of the 2023 Board of Education in Wayne will be just that: inclusive, collaborative, and transparent. They say it takes a village to raise a child. Well, this is our village. Thank you."
Anyone else? Mr. Patterson?
Hi. So first of all, I want to say thank you to everybody that has enabled myself, Matt, and Barbara to be here tonight. I am looking forward to this challenge. I'm sure it will be a challenge, but we have what is now, I believe, a really good team of people here to be able to help in creating policy around the direction of the schools that we have, and to ensure that we really try to aim to make this, as Mr. Duffy said, a better year than the last three years that we've been through. I think we've got a low bar set for us there, and hopefully we can aim to do well better than that. I'm really looking forward to that challenge and working with everybody in the administration too. And I think that that's going to be a fantastic way for us to help all of the students within our areas really thrive in their academic futures and put Wayne back at the top of the list where it deserves to be.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano? Got to get my own microphone here. First of all, I want to congratulate my fellow candidates who ran. I also want to thank those people who ran and did not succeed. There were some very quality people here. I see one in the back corner over there. Wayne, you did a great job. One of the things that really signaled a change in this district was every candidate was respectful of every other candidate, and we all emphasized how wonderful this district is. The only thing I will object to with Mr. Batterhill was unintentional. We're not getting back to Wayne. Wayne is great already. Wayne's high schools are at the tops in the state, and they're some of the tops in the nations. And I'm very proud to be able to put my talents forward here. The title that everybody has here is technically called trustee. If you put it on a resume, that's what the title is, other than the President and the Vice President, and that term means a lot. You've put your trust in us. In my case, 5,799 people said, yeah, I'm going to give this guy a shot for another three years. So I'm saying back to those people, thank you for your faith. For those who did not choose me, that's fine also. I have to earn your trust. And that's one of the things I hope to do during this time. We're always available to talk to you. I'm not a social media monster here, but if you see me on the streets or you want to get ahold of me, you can email us through, and I'll be happy to have conversations with you. We are the spokesmen and spokeswoman of the town's educational process. The public is a direct, I'm trying to find the right term for you. You're the direct extension of the educational processes of this town. You are not to be excluded. You are not walled off. You are the heart and soul of it. So when you come here, and I've always said this, and I'll say this again, speak your mind. If you've got a problem, let us know. That's our job is here to help them. That's what we're here for. So for everybody, thank you very much for your faith in me and the faith of the people who are on the Board of Education. And as for myself, I can guarantee you I'll give you 100% every single time I'm here. I cherish every single moment I'm here, and being off the board for a year, you really appreciate it even so much more that I relish not the power and not the prestige, but the honor you've given me and the trust you've placed in me. So thank you all very much. Have a Happy New Year, and Mom, this one's for you in heaven. Mrs. Rigoloso?
So I just want to take a second to thank the people of Wayne for this wonderful opportunity to be part of the decision-making process in our educational system. Thank you to all the family and friends who worked tirelessly and supported me in the campaign process. I appreciate each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. I'd like to thank my husband, Charles, who's always right next to me in whatever I do, and my beautiful family, and my beautiful Kaia that's sitting right over there in the middle. And being a trustee carries a weight of responsibility founded on trust, your trust. I intend to keep it through hard work, open communication, accountability, and transparency with the Wayne community. If you have questions, I will do my best to get you the answers. Never hesitate to reach out to me. Parents are the voice for their children, and I'm listening. The unity between the parents and teachers is strong, and I intend to help facilitate ongoing goodwill and collaboration together. I also expect to create an open line of communication between myself and the WEA and the NJEA. I'm especially excited to join my fellow board members, all of them. Kathy, Sean, Don, Mike, Matt, Ryan, Evie, and Harry. Please know this. I promise to use both my head and my heart when considering every matter that comes before me, always thinking of the best interests of our community and especially our children. Let's roll up our sleeves, get to work together, and put the children first. Thank you, everyone.
All right. I'll go last. I would like to first congratulate our new board members. Welcome. You're going to hit the floor running. I'll tell you in another week. When you see the agenda tomorrow, you will be shell-shocked, I'm sure. I'd like to thank my colleagues for electing me to this position tonight. As we begin a new year, it's time to reflect on the past and look forward to the future. Each year brings new challenges and new opportunities. It's up to us to make the most of them. Yes, a new year is always a chance to a fresh start and to set new goals. It's time to reflect on the past years and think about what we want to achieve in this coming year. We must think of each year as a new canvas waiting to be painted with the colors of our lives. We have the power to shape our own destiny, create future that is meaningful and fulfilling. By painting this canvas, it's not always easy. It requires hard work and dedication and the willingness sometimes to take risks. It requires the courage to step out of our comfort zone and even sometimes embrace change. Even when we may not have the exact outcome we want, we are still left with the canvas filled with endless hours of work that will become appreciated by many. As we embark on this new journey, let us not forget the valuable lessons of the past. Whether it was a mistake we made or a challenge we overcome, these experiences have shaped who we are and have given us the strength and determination to pursue the goals. But it's not enough to simply remember the past. We must actually learn from it. We must use what we have, learn to make better decisions in the present, and to chart a course for a brighter future. In the big picture, we'll come together for one common purpose and goal: the importance of education, the well-being of our staff, our students, and shape the future of a younger generation. It is critical that we have an approach, that we approach this topic with both empathy and unity. Too often, we see division and conflict when it comes to education in this country, with different groups fighting for their own interests and agendas. But the reality is that education is a vital part of our society, and we must unite to ensure that every individual has access to these opportunities. Education has the power to transform lives and communities, regardless of someone's background or circumstances. Creating a welcoming and fair environment for all students is something we should be able to continue to show and support. As President, we have the, I have the opportunity to lead and make and help guide decisions to be made for the best for the best of our district, our students, our teachers, and our community. I make this promise to you. I will listen. I will listen to your concerns. I will listen to your ideas. With this, we will continue to work together with you and strive to achieve the best possible outcomes. In the end, we all may have different viewpoints to what we think creates this bigger picture. It is up to us to work together to complete that picture. We are all pieces of a puzzle. It's not a matter of if they fit together, but where they're able to come together and complete the whole picture. I thank you. And if there's nothing, Dr. Tobek, do you have any comments?
Just very quickly. So first of all, the administration looks forward to working with all of you very closely in the coming months. I'd like to congratulate and welcome Mrs. Rigoloso, Mr. Batterhill, and Mr. Giordano. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Padap and Mr. Baba for their many years of service to the Board of Education, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. We will be honoring our past board members at the second meeting in January. Anything else? Motion to close? The second? Second? Mr. Duffy, Mr. Giordano? Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming.